We're a couple of minutes behind schedule, but we'll speed it and make it back up. Today is Wednesday, March the 19th, 2014. It's 10:02. I called the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. I ask you to please stand for a moment in silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some things never change.
There are 42 exonerations today for tax years 2011, 12, and 13. Do share your orders as of March 19th. Minutes of February 19 and 26. Vouchers: General County Fund, $298,877.98. Coal Severance, $385.99. Camp Muffley, $2,001.71. Mason-Dixon Park, $113.07. 911 Cash, $2,004.31. Assessors Valuation Fund, $10,158.55. General School Cash, $11,012. Total of $325,254. I have two budget revisions for the Sheriff's Office. One is a check in the amount of $2,691.25 for reimbursement of drug court participant supervision by home confinement. This time, I'm requesting the following amounts be deposited into Budget 705, Home Confinement. $2,500 into line item 705, 103 Salaries. $155 into 705, 104 FICA. The remainder of $36.25 into line item 705, 10401. And the other is reimbursement for JAG Grant, purchase of microrecorders. Sheriff is requesting that this amount be reimbursed to the law enforcement budget, 700, line 459.
So move for approval and budget revisions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renette.
Just have two grant reimbursements today. First is the Boca Grant for February 2014, $39,1159. And the second is the Emergency Solutions Grant Program for RDVIC in Caritas House, total of $1,0678.68.
For approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Sheriff.
Sheriff. Well, I am here today to ask your approval of, as you know, we talked about before in a couple of past meetings about losing some ranking officers pretty soon. We have, of course, Nick DiMedici, who's a sergeant, will be leaving us Friday is his last day. In June, we'll be losing Lieutenant Mansell Jones. In July, we'll be losing Captain Walter Fumich. Why do I tell you all that again? What I'm asking is, we're going to have, and I know this word is a hard word to say, a surplus in personal services when those folks leave because of the difference in their salaries that they're making and what an entry-level deputy's salary is. So what I'm asking, and not asking for any additional funds because we would have enough to do it, once those folks retire, that we be allowed to hire an additional deputy using the supplemental funds that are left out of their salaries for that position, and we wouldn't need to come back to the commission for any other funds. And if you'd like me to have a breakdown of what that would be and what we would have left over even after that additional person was hired.
You'd say a surplus after you hired an additional person?
Yeah, just a very little bit, but we would still have enough to...
Surplus is a surplus.
Surplus is a surplus. We would still have additional funds. We would end up basically, from what we're paying now to hire the additional deputy, we would still end up, at the end of the year, almost $14,000.
So you'll lose four and get five?
We would lose three and get four.
Three and four, okay. Do you think the motion on that?
Yes.
I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Very good.
I also think we'd like to convey to your staff the well job done on the drug arrest situation in discovery. That at least has to make a little dent in what's going on, particularly when you look at what you've recovered. And it's just another big plus for your department, I think, and your staff. So I think on behalf of all the residents of the county, we need to rid our county of that kind of garbage.
Absolutely.
I thought you looked very good in the picture. Your whole staff did, Kurt and Perry.
Krista makes everybody look good, that's what it is.
What's that? Is that what it is?
Krista makes everybody look good.
Oh.
She used the right lens. I said you might want to get one that has a little bit of blur to it, otherwise it's not looking good.
What you use, the wide-angle lens?
Wide-angle lens.
The other thing I want to...
I want the narrow lens on me.
The other thing I want to do is I want to commend you for your Gettysburg Address-like of being president of the West Virginia Association Counties. I read that newsletter. It took me about an hour and a half, but...
Some of the attendees said the same thing.
But it speaks well of Montague County's representation at that level. I think you did a commendable job.
I appreciate that.
Again, thanks. I mean, there's so many thanks to you, Sheriff.
Well, can I get on their mic?
And I just want to put...
No raise, no raise. Sent by the letters.
Yeah, I want to put in, yeah, I want to put in, I want to put in the record just clarification that, as he said, there is no additional funds being given from the county commission. This is coming from within his own budget and moving money around because of that difference. And I think that is very important. Thank you.
Well, since he added that, I need to add this.
Okay, go ahead.
I am really happy with the development of cooperation between the departments. And your department, Sheriff, really stands out, is working with us and understanding our situation, and we try very hard to understand your situation, and we all work together well. And I think that speaks highly of the caliber of people that you hire and have with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, that goes both ways. We all have to cooperate, we all have to understand what the needs are, we all also have to understand what the limitations are as well. So we appreciate what you all do as well.
Correspondents.
We have two letters, one from Don Torquer and one from Betty Hawes, and they have both decided that at this time they would like to resign from the former Mason-Dixon Historical Park Board, which is now the Montague County Parks Advisory Board.
We anticipated that there could be some resignations because we consolidated three boards into one. And this is probably demonstrated example that park members or board members had an interest in just one particular park, but didn't really have an overall interest in all the parks. We anticipated there would probably be some resignations, but hopefully it won't be everyone. Anything else?
No.
I move we accept the resignations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Unfinished business. Notice to proceed for a justice center.
You may want to just make the motion that the president be authorized to sign this once we get the contract documents to fill in the gates, because we don't have those right now.
Does he get a share of that $20 million that we're borrowing for his signature?
See, that's the trouble. As president, I couldn't get a share of anything either.
Well, you're lucky. I've worked in them, but I wouldn't want to live in them.
I've been in them.
I move that we authorize the president to sign the notice to proceed for our new justice center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then that he'll be able to sign the contract?
Yes, I was going to say that.
If the maker of the motion will accept that, and will be able to sign the contract for us.
Okay.
It should be here any day.
Yeah.
Yes. I'd accept that amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
The pre-construction meeting is next Thursday.
Next Thursday, and that's with Mossera Corporation?
Yes, and Silling.
And Silling, okay. Is that open to the public if they wanted to?
Sure, sure.
I think it has to be.
Yeah.
What time is it just for the public's information?
10:00. 10:00.
10:00 a.m. on the 27th?
Yes, here.
In this room?
No, it's at 1:00. 1:00.
1:00.
1:00. March the 27th in the county commission meeting room. Now, that's the last document we have to sign.
Pre-construction meeting with the contractor so we can get, make sure all the notice to proceed, the contract, and then we can hit the ground running.
Just to cause no problems, could we just send a memo out to all the department heads to state that we are, you know, we have mentioned that we are going to keep them informed with the progress? So we just send a letter that says this is happening, so that way everyone's informed? Okay? Thank you.
Approval to not use P-card for project.
This is something the commission discussed early on, that we would not be using the P-cards, so just want to make a motion that we're not, so that the architect is clear.
The one thing that we found, we found it with the sheriff's building when it was in progress, is that the contractor, we didn't include notification that the P-card would be used, so they didn't get the opportunity to include that in their cost of the proposal. And it's kind of unfair to a contractor if we don't include, because there is an extra cost involved. And rather than us absorb that cost, we're probably better off not using the card. I think that's the rationale.
Move that we do not use the P-card for the project.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next.
Next, last, in the work session last week, we talked about National County Government Month and what the commission might do for students locally. I proposed an essay contest that would, this memorandum would go to the eighth-grade teachers in the county, both public and private schools, asking them to submit an essay of between no less than 400, no more than 500 words. And it would be, how does my county commission make life better for me? Those entries will be submitted by a teacher to the commission. You'll review them and then make a selection of first, second, and third place. For second, first place being $150 for both the student and the teacher, $100 for second place for the student and the teacher, and $50 for third place for the student and the teacher. Teacher's share would be for school supplies. Also, we'd like to invite those three winners to sit with you during a commission meeting, the last meeting in April, the 23rd. Service commissioners alongside of you as being winners of the contest. So if that's agreeable, I'll send this memorandum out.
They might outshine us.
They're eighth graders.
That's what I'm saying.
We are good elementary school.
Are you smuggling an eighth grader or a fifth grader?
I happen to talk to a couple of eighth-grade English teachers already, and one of them said that they were going to talk to the social studies teacher because they thought it'd be a neat idea to combine the two projects and teach about county commission government and government, and then write an essay on it, so the two classes were considering working together. So make it both, just not only an essay, but also a history lesson, too.
And they can submit, because the state, West Virginia Association, what's it called?
County Commissioner's Association.
Is also doing a statewide essay, so they can submit to us as well as to the state, so they have a chance to win two prizes.
Yes.
You need a motion on that?
Sure.
Move to approve the brilliant plans of our county administration to celebrate County Government Month.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And under unfinished business, I don't know if you want to wait until you recognize elected officials, but Kerry, do you have that grant to be signed today?
No, it won't be ready till next week because they held off getting their estimate.
Okay, okay. I didn't just do it.
Well, I didn't see it on the agenda. You said it was going to be on the agenda, and so I told them that we would just get next week.
Okay, I thought it'd be come up under your part anyway, so.
I asked Bobby to get a estimate on patching the potholes on one of the roads in Montague County. And he did that, and I'd like to ask him if he'd just report to the commission, and then we can decide where we want to go from there.
This is that, what Eldon was talking about, what he went to the state about. I got a price on, this is just patching potholes.
That's all we're planning on doing.
But would you cover the extent that they're going to go?
I will. And this is based on Brookhaven Road, because we never heard from anybody, so I contacted a contractor who lives in that area, and I asked for a price on Brookhaven Road from Route 7, clear up to the school. And this is, there's two options, but we have to go with option one because it has to be prevailing wages. And the specifications are as follows. What they'll do is they'll clean the area of dirt and debris, they'll mill the potholes if they're needed, if they're big. They will apply some tack coat and install the asphalt to the pothole areas by hand or with a paver as needed. And what they would include in that is the following, of course, flagman, which would be a seven-man crew, labors and operators, milling machine if needed, a mini paver if there was a, maybe like the length of your table right there, that they would have to put down with a paver instead of by hand. All the trucking, the roller, tack coat, and a tack truck, and a power broom to sweep everything. And from Brookhaven Road, to patch the potholes from Route 7 to the school, estimated about 10-ton asphalt to be used. And what we did was asking for a price per ton of asphalt for what this would be to include the man tires and everything going on there. And he gave me a price for, per ton, but I told him I needed the material price in that also. So for that road to do that, it's 10-ton asphalt, and our price would be like $250 a ton on any other road. And so that would be $2,500 and $800 for material. So that road to do that is $3,300. $3,300.
Okay. That's really good, because it gives us an idea of what we're talking about, of, you know, $100,000, what $100,000 could fix. I think that's, that gives us good, now, when we get the priority list, when they get their final money in and they give me the cutoff, then we need to sit down with everybody that's going to participate. And the mayor is just right in front of me, so I'm not sure whether Westover has decided to participate or not. I know Jenny Celine, I talked to her on Friday, she's going to talk to Jeff McCorskey about setting down. Basically, once we get their actual cutoff, then we can, if that's not included, then we can add that in. But that gives us a real clear idea of the kind of, of effect that $100,000 or, even Development Authority, I talked to the Development Authority, you know, they got these industrial parks and they got different things around, and they, I told them it makes sense, and make sure that you have good road, get into your industrial park by contributing. So I also talked to the other, I attended the Region 6 meeting on Friday, and I talked with Tony Veltre at Taylor County, Creston County, and Ernie, new commissioner there in Marion County. And they were going to go back, and they, they're interested in talking about it, so I'll probably hear something after this week, after they've had their meetings this week. They're interested in possibly participating, too. The, what was interesting is that we have, I think his name is Greg Robinson, from Doddridge County, and I know that wanted to, need to come down and talk to them in Doddridge County because they would like to do the same thing on a recurring basis with the Department of Highways because of the damage caused by the trucks and stuff. So there's a lot of positive activity here, the interest.
Let me throw out an idea. I guess I'm a little impatient, but since we went to this extent to maybe communicate with Department of Highways that were serious about this, is can we, what do you think about us contacting the DOH and saying, look, we have a bid on the one road, can you expedite and let us know? Is this going to be in your plans or is it not going to be in your plans? Because if it's not going to be in your plans, then we can make a decision on whether we want to proceed with it and not drag it out.
Right. Well, actually, I have calls into both Greg Phillips and Dave Kramer to find out now that the weather's changed, what's the date that they'll give that. They were both in meetings this morning, and they said they'd call me back later today.
The only question that I have, well, two. First of all, for clarification, did they say that the money that they're matching can only be for state roads? I'm trying to remember.
The state road system.
Okay, that's fine. So that, so I think that needs to be clear for public, so people understand that it's a state road system. The second thing is, the only concern I have is for a business who says, well, okay, Mr. Doyle received that bid, but he didn't ask us or someone else. So that's my only concern, of how we want to be fair to whoever the companies are that may be interested in doing something like that. So that's my only concern, and I just want to make sure we don't do anything wrong that people feel, I remember when the towing in the city of Morgantown, everyone complained that we were showing favoritism. So that's the only, and I don't know that, yeah.
If I may respond to that.
Go ahead.
If it works the way I'm hoping it works, and the way I discussed with all the engineers down there and all, there won't be any company that will not be working.
Okay.
They'll all be working. Because it's, one of the, one of the goals that I asked for was that it be done and done immediately. So that means they'll be, they'll be contracting out with everyone that can do this kind of work. And if we get the money out there, they'll all be working someplace.
Okay.
The other thing, just for the record, is that we, we did advertise.
Oh, okay.
Last meeting, it was in the newspaper, the article on our meeting minutes reflects that we asked for contractors to contact the office. In fact, even the article gave the number to call. So we did attempt to notify. Second of all, we need to recognize the level of urgency of this project, because there is on some of these roads a very real safety hazard, some of these potholes. And I think that gives you justification to try to expedite this process. And the third thing, in terms of contracting, if we view it as a construction-type project, which it is, I mean, you go tear the road up and rebuild it, we can go without competitive bids up to $25,000.
Okay.
Emergencies?
You can deem it an emergency situation where...
Well, and it is in some cases.
Yeah, because the only other...
Public health and safety issues.
Yeah, right. I mean, there's another place, the only other place that I was thinking of emergency, and again, I don't know if it's been fixed, between the sheets and the sheets.
Yeah.
That area, I mean, which is used by thousands...
We specifically talked about that.
Yeah, I just was wondering, has that been even, so that hasn't been touched? Because then if you do that, that would be the only other thing that I would like to see, because that one is used so much that the cars, the holes are so big, they're going into the wrong lanes now.
Well, we also got, we also got to think of the outlying areas, I mean, you know, out of Wadestown.
Route 7 out there.
I heard, yeah, I heard that there's actual potholes on Route 7 in Casfield that are three-foot.
Okay.
I mean, it's very dangerous.
Okay.
And that's one of the things I hope, one of the things I hope that this money can help with is if it is the case that some of those potholes were there because they couldn't fix them last year, hopefully some of this money and some of the donations will be utilized.
We can seek a price on it, and I think the main part of that is from like where
you turn onto Route 7 from Little Rising right there, clear to, I think, the Mason-Dixon Park area.
That's where...
I think that's the worst part.
Why don't we go ahead and just proceed and get an estimate on it?
That's fine.
I think it's helpful, because then we can determine.
Right.
See, that's the whole idea. I'm not saying one's going to work better than the other. All I'm saying is, is that once we know about what it would cost to do it separately, then we can compare to just adding on and what the savings is. And the reality, the reality is, just like I said, if this works the way we talked about it and we envision it, everyone that knows how to fix a pothole will be out there working in month of April.
That's fine.
The other thing related to that is we talked a little bit about establishing a separate checking account. And we haven't had a chance to talk to Kelly about this, Al, but, but in some of our discussions, I think we need to look at, one, if we're going to accept private contributions, and if, two, if we're going to enter into joint kinds of agreements with municipalities. We need a different kind of accounting than our regular accounting system. We need a breakdown of who contributes, how much they contribute. We need one where it's mutual sharing with the municipality, if they contribute $10,000 and it's matched by $10,000. We need to be able to isolate that by a municipality, because we've already committed ourselves that that would go towards the municipality that contributed. So we don't want to use those funds for something else. And one of the concerns, I think, is that if we just keep it in our normal accounting procedures, it might get contaminated, and if we have monies left over from one year to the next, we want to make sure that we keep clarity with that fund. So what I would like to see happen and suggest, that we establish a separate checking account so that we can advertise it, we can let contributors know that they can make contributions to that fund directly to the bank that we establish it in, as well as any organization. So it doesn't have to come through, they can mill directly to that, and then we ask the bank to keep an accounting of who contributed and what amount.
We have, just to give you a little bit of information, we have Flumner run some of this scenario by the auditor's office and ask for guidance on that, should we have a completely separate account, or should we just have a different kind of general budget? So we're getting some information back from the auditor's office on that. What I'll do is call or ask back and with the addition, say, here's what they want to do, is if there's contributions made, can it be made straight to the bank without going through the tax office showing as a contribution?
Well, the tax office could be a responsible party and still monitor, because it's county funds. And you would still be the authority that handled that, or oversight of that, although we would...
So I can get my road done for them?
No, you can't do that.
Yeah, don't pretend you can.
But, but I want to make sure that the tax department understands our rationale. This is, this is an unusual project. It's a first... project. It's a first-time project. There's a need to make sure that the general public, as well as the municipalities, understand where the money's coming from, where the money's going, and the accountability for that, for those funds. It's unlike our normal budgeting procedures. And they need to understand that. We're off into new territory with this road fund. So, you know, something new and something different. They need to be flexible and get out of the box.
Yeah, our Region Six meeting, the discussion started on the road fund, when Commissioner Jennings from Creston County said, "Elton, you got commissioners down there in Montague County, is making the other 54 counties in the state look bad. You need to quit coming up with these good ideas."
We need to, there is some urgency, because, you know, we don't want normal progression of government on this thing, because we'll still be talking about it six months from now, instead of doing anything. And so the quicker that they can give us a response, the better. Or we'll apologize for doing the wrong thing if they don't give us an answer, if it's wrong. I don't think it's wrong. I think we can do anything we want to do, as long as, you know, they can put on a different set of glasses. Reports from the county commissioners.
Okay. First, I want to congratulate, or on behalf of the, all three county commissioners, the WVU rifle team winning the NCAA. That was two years in a row. The other issue, I have some kind of exciting news. I did speak to the Parkersburg Engineering Firm that is supposedly got the contract on the 1-1973. They were supposed to get it officially this week, and try to do something about it, make recommendations. Now, that's been four months, and they finally were told that they had the contract, so we're moving, and hopefully, before I die, this situation will be resolved. That's it. So it's exciting.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Elton? No, I don't have anything. Reports from elected officials. Sheriff?
Nothing.
Mr. Sessor?
That's Mark.
Nothing.
Oh, well, let's say welcome back. I know you've been really ill, so I am glad to see that you are back, because I, yeah, so glad to see that you're moving around.
Carrie?
I just needed a motion from the County Commission to appoint election officials. It's due by March 25th, so you won't be having another meeting. So it's, Sheriff, and that's my end. The executive committees appoint their poll workers, and then the County Commission has to accept those, so that we can send out letters and do more action.
Do you want to lead the question?
Pursuant to West Virginia Code 3130, a motion is needed by the County Commission to appoint the election officials for the May 13, 2014 primary election. It's presented by the political party executive committees. The county clerk will work to fill any vacant positions between the date of appointment and Election Day.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jane, you have any, anything?
I just came to see you.
Mayor Johnson? City of Westover.
Yeah. Well, not really, but hell, I came all the way over and got dressed up my mother's dress. This project, which, you know, I totally encourage, I'm going to have to go to council to see what type of participation they want to add to the project. But I think that, and I hate to say this, because I probably don't think about it, or at least I hadn't, but I want to say it anyhow, Westover's kind of been a unique situation with this. Because we have the ability to fix what problems we have on the state part of the road coming through. And I know what council's going to say, as far as contributing any money, they probably, I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking that they're going to say, "Well, we have to look at our individual paving list before we can determine how much of that, you know, how much we're going to use on our actual streets that don't affect this part of the project." But having said that, I guess I need to talk to them and see what's what. But I think you might, I don't know that, I'm sure that Granville has the ability as well. They've got a pretty good crew that works out in the streets as well. So that might kind of separate us in Granville, and maybe possibly even Morgantown. I don't know how Morgantown, Morgantown has more roads, you know. People will be like, "Westover, how we keep our streets clean?" Well, we don't have as many streets as Morgantown does, you know. I mean, that's, they have a bigger, a lot more responsibility. So just keep that in mind. That might be food for thought, because I'm not sure.
I think your all's participation in looking at what roads are being done, and what roads you're going to do, what roads the state's going to do, and then the county can fill in between, too. Because the original motion and ideas presented by Commissioner Muratola was that it doesn't matter where the roads were, inside the city, outside the city, it's part of the state highway system, we're going to get it fixed. So I understand why it might not be a money contribution, but I think to make this work for everyone to its maximum, will need your all's participation.
Absolutely. I can say that without even confirming with council. As far as the money contribution, I'm not ruling that out at all. That's something that I have to discuss with everybody on council. But, you know, it's just something to think about. And it might even be possible that, because I know that the asphalt last year was just a little shy of $8 a ton, if you go get it yourself, which we do. You know, specifically for this project, Gary may give us a, may give a, you know, a little bit of discount on the cost of the asphalt itself, because that would be, that could be their way. I wouldn't expect them to just give it to you.
Yeah.
It could be their way, you know, making some contribution to this project. But I really do think that you guys are on the right road, and not just this project, everything you got done. I'm proud to say I'm from Mon County. You can tell we'll need some here.
And I appreciate your letter to the editor. That was, the letter that you've written to the editor, I do appreciate, because a lot of times, we always hear the negative side, and you were very supportive, not only Westover, but Mon County, and it was most appreciated.
Ron Snyder, Town of Granville.
Have nothing for you, sir.
Okay. Renetti, you got anything else? Jamie?
I got it.
Diane? Janet? I ain't leave anybody out, did I?
Bobby, he's hiding out there.
Bobby, where's Bobby?
He's hiding out there.
Maybe I'll go check for him.
There's Bobby right there.
Let's go to the Rails and Trails. There's a bunch of people down there.
Comments from the public?
Yeah.
Would you stand, please, and state your name and address?
I'm Daniel McMullin. I live in First Ward on Height Street, 486 Height Street. And we've just formed a neighborhood association, a First Ward Neighborhood Association. I was just elected president. And I just wanted to speak about this proposed rec center I've heard about. I believe it's more of a Boe parking city and WVU thing. But we just, and talking amongst ourselves, we just wanted to mention that we'd like to be kept apprised that we had heard through the rumor mill, I guess more than anything, that White Park was being considered. And we'd just like to be involved in the process if it is, and make a suggestion that possibly the old bus garage up there might be better than off the end of the skating rink, is what I had heard. But that was it. And then also to thank you guys for being proactive on the potholes. Having driven out Route 7 a couple times in the last month, it is unbelievable.
Yes, it is.
And I would also suggest that maybe there are a couple exceptional potholes, like that one on Walnut Street, that if there was somehow, we could even be more proactive and fill some of those axle breakers as they come up. I mean, some of them you can handle by just slowing down, but some, they can cause a lot of damage and are very dangerous. Maybe if there's even more rapid response, we could do to those would be a good thing.
According to Channel 12 News, the city of Morgantown is gearing up to start their patching. And I know the career is activated in terms of producing asphalt, so hopefully some of these potholes are going to start disappearing.
Sorry?
I want to thank you for coming to our meeting. One of the things that all of us appreciate is input from the community. And it's good to have someone come in and give us input and comments and recs.
Trying to get active on First Ward.
And part of one of the suggestions will be to have public input for, and that was one of the areas that we had discussed. And I can tell you, I mean, we were looking at the possibly of Marilla, First Ward, and other places. Again, no one knows anything yet. I mean, everything's still just on the ground.
Early stage. We just wanted to speak about it.
And, no, and I'm glad you did that. And I will make sure that that gets to the Facilities Group that is going to be meeting.
All right. Well, thanks for your time.
I got to say, I'm a little First Ward boy. I live there now, but I grew up on Cadell and Widenwood. And I had paper routes all over there. In high school, it was the First Ward guys and everyone else. So I've got an affinity with First Ward. Now, I'm glad to see you put together an association. I know exactly where Height Street is. I know all the streets over there.
I lived there for 30 years now. I came here to go to school in '82. My dad bought a house there in '85 for me and my brothers, and I ended up buying the house for him and never left. I love it over there.
Well, great. And I hope you come back and see us, and keep us apprised of what your needs are and what you're doing.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Being no other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, and a second. All in favor, signify. Saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.